Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is October 22, 2024. I apologize for my voice. I seem to be losing it. But we'll see how long it lasts. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Mr. Scott has an excused absence for this evening. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. Mike, thank you for your assistance. I'd like to call on Mrs. Fisher at this point for a motion to approve the minutes from the October 8 meeting.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting minutes and the workshop minutes, and I do find them order, and I move for their approval.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We do have several presentations and special proclamations for this evening. I would like to start off with what seems to be almost an annual event around here, and that's a recognition of the Alter Boys Basketball Team winning the state Division II championship. And Coach Eric Carter will accept the certificate and another little gift that we have for him. So I'm going to come down and present this to you.
Thank you. Joe Brand is my nephew. He said he could meet her.
Read this, and I'll present it to you. Good-looking group. The city of Kettering is honored to recognize the Alter Boys Basketball Team for their hard-fought and successful 2024 basketball season. Winning the 2024 Division II State Championship exemplifies the dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship exhibited by these talented athletes. The achievement has brought distinction and honor to Alter High School and the Kettering community. It is with great pleasure that City Council and the Kettering community congratulate the Boys Basketball Team on this exceptional accomplishment and extend our best wishes for continued success. I'm not quite sure where you end up hanging up, but wherever. Do you want to say anything?
I'm very proud of you for what they accomplished. It's been a long time since 2001, since our last big title. But...
That one.
Basketball, not alter, but we were extremely excited. It was a great season. We're looking forward to this season. Just want to thank my staff and all these guys, and even those guys who could not make it to the... It was just a fantastic season. It was really fun.
Congratulations. Congrats.
I'll talk to you later. Yeah. You too.
Congratulations.
We now have an award presentation for the Good Neighbor Awards. This is a new, I think this is the second year we've done it, and it's really neat to honor special people in our community. We forgot to tell the boys. Gwen Owen's going to... No, she's coming up here. I'm not even doing this. Gwen Owen will present the Board of... On behalf of the Board of Community Relations, the awards for tonight.
Well, I'm just, I'm really happy to be here tonight because this is just about my most favorite thing that we do. On behalf of the Board of Community Relations, this is our second annual Good Neighbor Award, and it's just a big dose of neighborliness and kindness when we all could really use it. Most people go about doing their good deeds and being kind and helping their neighbors without expecting anything in return, but those are the people that we recognize with this award. They are nominated by their neighbors, who appreciate them so much, and so do we. When you have good neighbors, you really know how lucky you are. We received 21 nominations this year, and they will all receive the certificate from the city, signed by the mayor. But we invited a few of them here today to accept their certificates in person, and then we're having a little reception downstairs after this, so they can join us then.
Quietly.
So I'll present the certificates now, and our first goes to Charlene Bayless.
Thank you, City of Kettering, for honoring me, neighbor Jim Priest, for thinking of me, and it's in my daughter Rebecca Theobald, Colorado Springs, Tennessee, Tennessee. Thank you.
And I have no trouble imagining that Charlene would be a good neighbor. For years, I would receive notes from her whenever I did anything that she thought was good, and occasionally, not so good. But she was very thoughtful, and I've always appreciated that, so thank you.
Our next certificate, I'm going to apologize because I'll probably mispronounce the last name, goes to Claire and John Beoglides.
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 Close.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just have to say, we've been in Kettering six years. We moved here from the city of Dayton, and we absolutely love you.
Well, we're glad you're here. Thank you.
Welcome home.
And I'd like to say something about the person who nominated us is, you know, we get more...
Can you move closer to the microphone here, right here?
So the people on TV can hear you.
We get more from her than she ever gets from us. And, you know, besides that, she does make me cookies.
You know, we were just saying up here, we wish we knew what you were nominated for. Can I break the rules and ask you to share that with us? Oh, okay.
When we send the letters out, we do include an excerpt so they know.
Okay.
Your nominator.
You want to brag about yourself and tell us what you did?
I'll have to remember that for next year. I won't embarrass anybody. It is really nice to know.
But, yes, so thank you, and we do love Kettering.
Okay, thank you.
Our next Good Neighbor goes to Nathan Ditmar.
How much to say? Pretty shy, so thanks for the vote, foundation. If you see Bob Scott tomorrow, then I was here. I didn't miss, but one of my students is here tonight.
He's a little under the weather, so...
He's a good assistant.
And I'm sure he's watching.
My neighbor nominated me, and unfortunately, she fell Sunday, her neck broke. She's alive, she's good. She's in the hospital. She'll be here, it doesn't matter.
Wow.
Wow. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Isn't this fun? Our next is Susan Sauerbronn.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you and the person that nominated me, this Lisa.
Oh. Okay, Lisa, you can tell us what she did.
I can't because I'll cry. But this woman knows every child and helped raise every child in the city. She's amazing. She's wonderful.
I've heard you talk about her before.
Some of it's not great, though.
Thank you.
I love the city. We've been here 25 years, and I'll be here for another 25. I'm not going anywhere.
Wonderful.
And I just love Kettering, I love the kids, and my neighbors, and my family. My family does a lot of volunteering with me.
Yeah.
They've been through it all, so...
Where's your family? Can they wave their hands?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Our next Good Neighbor is Dottie Spatz.
Thank you very much. My neighbors are going clear back 20 years when I was... Their kids were little, and I was like a grandma to them, and they've never forgotten. They're still there. I'm still here. I've been in Kettering 69 years.
Wow, that's wonderful. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
People don't forget.
And our last Good Neighbor is our great Good Neighbor, our goodest Good Neighbor, that goes to Laurel Hemelgaard.
Oh, okay.
Laurel gets a certificate, a gift certificate, to the Blueberry Cafe along with her.
So now, we do need to hear what you did.
I may have to defer to my nominator, Nancy Baumann, because she and I have known each other for...
Come on down, Nancy.
Can I help you?
She's coming. Oh, you could probably stand right there.
I wasn't the one with three. I was going to say, wait a minute. There's an example up right there.
Right there.
It's very much symbiotic. It's not a one-way street. She wants to hear from you because you're the one that put the words to paper.
You nominated her?
I did, indeed.
Thank you.
And it was, I also nominated Claire and John Beoglides. I am one of the most blessed people in the city of Kettering. I tell you that from my heart because I have the most wonderful neighbors that ever took breath, and I swear that before God himself. I am so lucky. I have known this one since she was in college, and she moved in next door to me.
Oh.
And John and Claire, I had never met until they moved in across the street, and they, as you can tell, I haven't always needed extra help, but I do now, and I'm just blessed to live in the community where I do, where I can get it, and where my neighbors care so much. And it is me who is the fortunate one in this whole thing, and they both... I fell in the middle of May and broke my back in three places, and Claire and John have gotten my newspaper, because, you know, old people like newspapers. And they've gotten my newspaper every day since, put it inside my storm door so I don't have to go outside the house at all. John and Laurel fight over who's going to load my driveway in the wintertime, and Laurel has been like a daughter to me, and I call her my neighborhood angel because she is that.
Thank you so much. Both of you.
Thank you for awarding.
I don't know about the rest of you, but all of you have made my day, so thank you so much for that. And Gwen, thanks for what the Board of Community Relations has done.
For those of you who still have Good Neighbors out there, will be accepting nominations again next summer.
Okay.
Good neighbors everywhere in Kettering.
Right. And that's what I kept hearing over and over again, so that was really great. Okay. Our next presentation here, I am particularly happy to recognize, not because of the award, which is well worth the presentation, but for the person who's giving it, is Bill Cheerhart, who I think it's publicly known, if it wasn't before, it is about to be, was just named to the, was just named to the head of Parks and Rec for the city of Kettering. And Bill's been with us in the past. He's been at Five Metro Parks for a little bit, but he's now coming back home. So come on down, Bill.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Caught me off guard a little bit there with that...
Yeah, I went out of agenda.
Well, no, it wasn't that. It was, you know, so, yes, the news is out that I will soon be...
It's good, because it is now.
I will soon be your new Director of Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts, and I am thrilled and ecstatic at that news. So rather serendipitous timing to be here tonight, talking to you all about Five Rivers Metro Parks. I did ask Mr. Greason if I should just take my seat when I'm finished presenting. He said, hold your horses, you don't start until December.
I'm his boss.
I have to wait a few more moments, but, but good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff and residents. As mentioned, my name is Bill Cheerhart. I am the chief of administration currently for Five Rivers Metro Parks. Metro Parks was founded more than 60 years ago due to the efforts of a group of dedicated residents who were concerned about the pace and growth of urban sprawl. Metro Parks has continued to serve the residents of Montgomery County by preserving green space and natural areas and providing high-quality parks, programs, outdoor experiences, and facilities. We know the Metro Parks are well-used by our residents and are a major attraction for visitors. Metro Park's 16,000 acres of open space attracts more than 2 million visitors each year, serving as a destination and an economic driver for our region. Ninety-six percent of Montgomery County residents live within a 10-minute drive of a Five Rivers Metro Parks facility. That's astounding to think about. There's something for people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities to enjoy in your Five Rivers Metro Parks. If it's hiking, fishing, and paddling, we got it. Camping, kayaking, sledding, we got it. There's even an ice arena downtown, or if you just want to enjoy some quiet time outdoors, we've got that, too. Of the nearly 16,000 acres of land, 90% of that is in its natural state, protected from development. Metro Parks operates 35 locations, including 18 Metro Parks, the Second Street Market, eight conservation areas, and eight portions of the region's paved trail network. Now typically, when I give this presentation, I ask the people, how many of you were today years old when you realized the Second Street Market is a facility of Five Rivers Metro Parks? I won't ask any of the members of council to raise your hands, but I will tell you that most times when I do this presentation, about 30% of the room puts their hands up when they learn that it is a facility of Five Rivers Metro Parks. Metro Park supports our environment, physical, emotional, and mental health by providing great outdoor recreation and relaxation, offering free outdoor education and festivals, and keeping our waterways clean, preserving green space, and protecting our natural resources. Metro Parks has always been focused on the community and meeting their priorities. To do that, we are continually communicating with our residents, park users, other community leaders such as yourselves, and partners. Based on that feedback, Metro Parks created a 10-year master plan to assure that we are planning for and addressing those community priorities. This fall, as you may have heard, Metro Parks will have a 1 mil, 10-year levy on the November 5 general election ballot. If the levy passes, Metro Parks will be able to continue to provide safe picnic areas, restrooms, play areas, programs, trails, roads, bridges, through the ability to address the 58 million in deferred maintenance. We'll be able to preserve green space and protect our natural resources, and protect natural areas, wildlife habitats, and water quality. We'll be able to provide a variety of outdoor recreation and educational program opportunities for all ages. We will also be able to host outdoor events, festivals, and performances, and retain and attract a knowledgeable and helpful staff. If the levy fails, Metro Parks will have to delay those repairs and replacement of more than 58 million in deferred maintenance, needed to keep those trails and facilities up, such as restrooms, trails, and playgrounds accessible, clean, and safe for all the public for decades into the future. And if the levy fails, it will require further significant cuts to programs, maintenance, while keeping additional positions vacant. Now, by law, as a Metro Parks employee here today, I cannot advocate for or against this issue. There has been an independent campaign committee established to do this, and to contact the campaign committee, you can visit their website at voteforfiverivers.org, or email them at info@fiverrivers.org. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have for me.
Does anyone have any questions, Bill? Okay. Thanks so much for coming and telling us a little bit about the parks, and I think it's definitely an asset that we all enjoy so much, and we look forward to you filling that chair.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Next, in honor of the National Arts and Humanities Month, Shayna McConville will accept the award. You want to come on forward, and we'll read the proclamation. Jill is going to read it.
Hi. I have a proclamation here for you that says, "The nation's 126,000 nonprofit art organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local art agencies and communities across the country, and the Arts and Humanities Council of 50 states in the six U.S. jurisdictions and districts have regularly issued proclamations on an annual basis designating October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas cities and states, their local state art agencies, which represent thousands of cultural organizations, have celebrated the value and importance of culture in the lives of Americans and health of thriving communities during the National Arts and Humanities Month for 31 years, and whereas the humanities help diverse communities across the United States explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of the NEA, and whereas the arts and humanities embody so much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families and our communities and our country, and whereas the creative industries continue to remain among the most vital sectors of the American economy, providing new opportunities for developing cities, creating jobs and economic activity within their own industry and across sectors, and making communities attractive to business development, and whereas this month will serve as an opportunity to reflect and highlight artists who work diligently to enrich the lives of all Americans, our mayor declares October 2024 to be the National Arts and Humanities Month." And finishing that, in the city of Kettering, and call upon our community members, does call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the art and culture in our nation and our own local community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Am I supposed to give this to you? Should I?
Yeah, well, yeah, there you go. Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
Thank you very much. We really look forward to being here every October on this occasion, and again, you have said so much about what the arts mean to so many people, and I just want to thank you all for your leadership, thank all the residents. We're in such good company tonight as well, with the Good Neighbors, and Kettering is an exceptional city. It is a city that really invests a lot into being the vibrant and healthy community that it is, and I'm really happy to be joined tonight by members of our Kettering Arts Council, who will tell you a little bit more about what's been going on and what's coming up. But really, it's also the residents that make it possible that we're here, so we really appreciate them. And I do want to, of course, thank the staff at Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts, Rosewood Art Center, and then our amazing volunteers. The Art in Public Places Committee is also no exception. They do incredible work as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Shayna. And now, I think Penny Miller with the Arts Council is going to tell us a little bit more about what they do.
Good evening, Mayor Lehner, and the council members, and everybody else who makes the city of Kettering really run. My name is Penny Miller. I serve on the Kettering Arts Council, and we're going to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing this year. We are a 15-member committee. We're made up of local arts artists, arts aficionados, art teachers, educators, community leaders, and just people who appreciate the arts. Our mission is to provide access to the arts for all ages, encourage a passion for the arts, and promote art appreciation and education by supporting Rosewood and Art in Public Places. Last year, we participated in the city's strategic planning process, and we're excited to share how our activities in the cultural arts relate to each of the city's goals. High-quality services. Kettering is known for delivering exceptional services across the spectrum. They're a standout with their commitment to the arts. Accessibility to the arts for every resident is the cornerstone of our mission. We can do this because of successful collaborations with Dayton Metro Libraries. We have preschoolers. We have, they come to Rosewood every month. We provide activities with literacy, creativity, lifelong learning. We have read almost 100 books together and almost 1,000 participants. Next slide, good. Our inaugural mural, mural, mural project, which you see in the next slide, this engaged and employed three teenagers from Fairmont. It showed them what it was like to work in government. Not only did they learn to create a large-scale mural, but they met with the various city staff to learn what goes on when you go into a public art project. They learned about engineering, zoning, accessibility, community engagement processes, and so much more, and that's a really cool mural. We do train a diverse group of students and clients to assist in cultural arts activities. This includes adults from the United Rehabilitation Services. We also have interns from Wright State, Sinclair, Miami, the Dayton Regional STEM School, and from Fairmont High School. Through those initiatives, Kettering not only enriches communities' artistic landscapes, but also empowers our youth with knowledge and skills that extend beyond the canvas. They're a standout with their commitment to the arts. Accessibility to the arts for every resident is the cornerstone of our mission. We can do this because of successful collaborations with Dayton Metro Libraries. We have preschoolers. We have, they come to Rosewood every month. We provide activities with literacy, creativity, lifelong learning. We have read almost 100 books together and almost 1,000 participants. Next slide. Good. Our inaugural mural, mural, mural project, which you see in the next slide, this engaged and employed three teenagers from Fairmont. It showed them what it was like to work in government. Not only did they learn to create a large-scale mural, but they met with the various city staff to learn what goes on when you go into a public art project. They learned about engineering, zoning, accessibility, community engagement processes, and so much more. And that's a really cool mural. We do train a diverse group of students and clients to assist in cultural arts activities. This includes adults from the United Rehabilitation Services. We also have interns from Wright State, Sinclair, Miami, the Dayton Regional STEM School, and from Fairmont High School. Through those initiatives, Kettering not only enriches communities' artistic landscapes, but also empowers our youth with knowledge and skills that extend beyond the canvas.
Thank you. Yep, well, we thank her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Laura Arbor, and I live in the Southern Hills neighborhood. This evening, I'm going to be covering the art for economic development and how art engages and adds to our active lifestyle. Study after study has demonstrated that arts play a vital role in attracting new residents and business. Kettering is no exception. With an internationally recognized art program and a thriving art center, Kettering offers an appealing, dynamic cultural landscape. Tens of thousands of visitors come to Rosewood at events like Art in the Commons, and there's nothing in southwest Ohio that even comes close to what we do for the arts. Each year, thousands of people participate in classes and exhibitions and studies, I'm sorry, studios at Rosewood. Since the renovation at Rosewood finished last December, it's going to be hardly a year, we've seen a 42% increase in visitors to our clay studios and 17% increase in class registration. This translates to more jobs in arts and more impact on the creative economy. The Kettering Health Art Gallery at Rosewood Art Center features over 100 artists each year. The exhibitions regularly bring in school groups from Fairmont High School, Stiver School, and the Dayton Regional STEM School, as well as enthusiasts from all over central and southwest Ohio. Currently, the exhibition is two solo artists from the Cincinnati-based Photo Focus Biannual. It's going to be up through November 9th, and this Saturday, 60 visitors from Cincinnati will be joining for a special reception with the artist. It's an open, public reception. We'd like to invite you all there. Myself and other members from the Kettering Art Council will also be there at that reception. By investing in the arts, Kettering fosters a rich cultural environment. It stimulates economy growth and vibrant hub for creativity that makes us stand out. So now let's talk about engaging an active lifestyle. Whether you're taking that pottery class or biking from park to park, the art contributes to our vibrant and welcoming committee. Our activities were created with resident feedbacks, which include the Bike for Arts Program that was launched almost a decade ago. Hundreds of youth and adult are successfully learned about arts in our park and bike safely through this program. I was part of this fall's art, where we did the Bike the Art, and it was so amazing to hear all the other bikers out there talking about all the public art and amazed it was all there. Many of our public artworks are created through that resident participation, including Kennedy, Winsler, Oak Creek, and the Southdale Park. The mural at Rosewood and the neighborhood sidewalk games at Haverstick were possible because of the contributions of hundreds of students from the city of Kettering schools. Pictured here is one of the Haverstick mosaics. This project provided a fun, safe space for children to play in a neighborhood with no public park. And I will have to say also, if you've not been out and saw the B mosaics, I would make an effort to get out and see it. It is a really amazing layout, how they did that in the sidewalks. We welcome all people to the arts. We celebrate different cultures, the ideas in our gallery program, and with each exhibition, we have partnered with now the Board of Community Relations on exciting new program. This year included Juneteenth and the Hispanic Heritage Month. By actively engaging in the arts, our community cultivates a spirit of inclusiveness, creativity, and connect that enriches the lives of all residents. I'm now going to pass on to Shane Weber, and he's going to talk about the livability.
Hello, I'm Shane Weber, and when we think about sustainability, our minds often turn to recycling. At Rosewood, we embody this principle daily, whether it is repurposing discarded clay from classes into new materials, or embracing broader strategies for reuse. An example of this transformative renovation of a 1965 school in the Rosewood Arts Center, I think I skipped the wrong, to the wrong slide maybe? I was 14, my bad. Slide 11. We get place-making and establishing community spaces with the work we do, particularly through the public arts program. For example, the Ridgewood Road Bridge integrated art with infrastructure, a perfect example of how to create a memorable and special place utilizing a strong engagement process from beginning to end. Our public art program also builds strong community and neighborhood pride through site-specific artworks. Through our Cities of Service Program, each year, we identify a neighborhood and look for an opportunity to engage artwork into their public spaces. This included Oak Park, where conversations with residents and activities with the local elementary school resulted in a special artwork that also is the first representation of our namesake, Charles F. Kettering, and his many contributions to our modern world. Slide 13. Connectivity. Throughout the year, we offer free programming and special events, such as the beloved Art on the Playground, where art and play come together to inspire creativity in children. Our gallery, which is always free to the public, invites everyone, regardless of experience, to engage with contemporary art. Through these initiatives, we not only celebrate creativity, but also strengthen the livability of our city, making Kettering a more inclusive and enriching place for all. I wanted to skip the slide. We recognize the forward-thinking decisions that our city leadership made in preserving this building, upgrading it to meet the needs of the 21st century, and ensuring compliance with ADA standards. The result is a stunning facility that not only enhances our community programs, but also serves as a model for sustainable development. Slide 16. Visitors from city and city officials to art museum leaders and community residents are consistently amazed by the innovative transformations that breathe new life into the historic space. The Rosewood Art Center stands as a testament to how thoughtful design and sustainability can harmoniously coexist, enriching our community for generations to come. Now I'm going to pass it to Tracy.
Hello, I'm Tracy McGelfresh. I'm the last one. So our identity as a suburb can be told in various ways. Several years ago, we explored Kettering's legacy through art, design, and architecture. We hosted architecture tours, presentations on mid-century modern topics, film screenings on suburbia, and expeditions showcasing artifacts from the former Kettering Moraine Museum and Historical Society. The program series brought hundreds of people together to deepen our understanding of Kettering's rich history and ongoing evolution. Some of you may remember Kettering Rocks, which brought eight artists to Delco for a summer to carve massive limestone blocks back in 2002. These sculptures are still a part of the recognizable aesthetic of our city, and to this day are remarked upon as innovative. Kettering was the first city ever to host an international symposium of this kind. We tell our Kettering story every day, and we use our abilities visually to share too, as you can see in these images. We live in a city that is strong, innovated, and nationally recognized, a place where creativity thrives. We take pride in our shared story and the bright future we continue to build together in Kettering. On behalf of the Kettering Arts Council, thank you for your dedication to nurturing creativity and for invaluable role you play in enriching our cultural landscape. Your efforts are truly appreciated. Thank you for your, all you do for our community.
And please extend our appreciation for so much of what you all do on the Arts Council to make this such a special community. You have really, I mean, we live with you every day, and sometimes we don't stop to realize just how much you bring to this community, but wow. So, thanks so much. Let's see. That completes our presentations for this evening. We have no public hearings this evening. If there's anyone in the audience at this point who would like to come down and address council on any of the legislative items that are on tonight's agenda, please do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speaker must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address council tonight? Make sure there's no one getting up to come down here. I think they're all getting up to leave. Stay, Bill. Okay. No one else wanted to address council at this point? We'll now move on to ordinances in second reading, and we have none. Resolutions. Call in Mrs. Fisher to read the first one.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution affirming the decision of the Kettering Planning Commission in case number PC 24-005 concerning the property located at 940 East David Road. It is requested by the council office, and I request, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brexton, do you want to speak to that?
I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
If you pass this resolution, you're affirming the decision of the planning commission in this case.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
No.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing sidewalks, curbs, and drive approaches as part of the Golf Club Estates Street and Drainage Improvements Project, project number 03-607C. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Brexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three resolutions this evening, this one and the next two, with regard to proposed 2025 capital improvement program projects. The first one is the one you just read, is the Golf Club Estates Street and Drainage Improvements Project. In addition to the drainage work that's proposed as part of this project, we are planning to make repairs to concrete curbs, sidewalk, and drive approaches in the neighborhood. Propellers will be assessed for the necessary repairs per section 729 of the Higher Rights Code. This is simply the first step in that legislative process for the assessments declaring the necessity that these repairs need to be made. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution reversing the, oops, that's the wrong line. I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing curb sidewalks and drive approaches on various streets as part of the 2025 curb sidewalk and drive approach repair project, project number 05-125. This is being requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval. Second.
Okay, Mr. Brexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Previous, similar to the previous resolution, this one is for our 2025 annual curb sidewalk approach pair program. This, our next year's program mainly consists of miscellaneous locations, sidewalk trip hazards, and things like that that we've been made aware of over the last month, or excuse me, over the last year. Be happy to answer questions.
No questions? Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing sidewalks, curbs, and drive approaches as part of the 2025 East Whip Road Improvement Project, project number 02-128H. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Brexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. The third in this series of resolutions that are all fairly similar. This one is for a planned resurfacing of East Whip Road between Bigger Road and the western Cork boundary with the city of Centerville. It's mainly a resurfacing project, but there are a number of areas that need concrete repair prior to resurfacing. I would also mention, for all these resolutions, upon approval this evening, we will be notifying residents of their estimated assessments here in the coming weeks, but there is no money owed the residents, from the residents until after the projects are completed and the actual final assessment legislation won't come until the spring of 2026. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the submission of application for Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. This was requested by the Engineering Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Brexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. This year, we are planning to apply for federal highway funds from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. There are three projects that we are submitting for funding. The first one is a project on East Dorothy Lane between Woodman Drive and County Line Road that will resurface the roadway, and it will also add a shared-use path on the south side of the road along that stretch of the corridor, as well as add new city-owned street lighting in areas that do not have sufficient street lighting. So that is the first project that we're proposing. A second project is a resurfacing on South Dixie Highway from Dorothy Lane to the northern incorporation limit. This would be the first resurfacing since we did major reconstruction of the Dixie and Dorothy intersection back in the early 2000s, and then also resurfaced this section of South Dixie shortly thereafter. So that is the second project. And then the third project is a proposed traffic signal replacement project along Farhills Avenue that will replace five signals, five span wire signals with mast arms at the intersections of Farhills of Ron, Farhills of Lorland, Farhills in Fox Ridge, Farhills in Windinway, and Farhills in Dorothy. And I'm very proud of myself for remembering all those off the top of my head. For the first two projects, we are applying for surface transportation funding. Funding is available in state fiscal year 2028 to 202030. The last project, the signal replacements, we're applying for congestion mitigation and air quality funds. Those are not available until state fiscal year 2030 or 2031. So we will find out probably sometime in January of next year whether or not we are successful in getting funding for these projects. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing an additional expenditure of funds for streetlight maintenance. The original estimated cost was $25,000. The budget is $6,000. It is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Earlier this year, we entered into an agreement with Security Fence Group for the maintenance of our city-owned street lighting system. The original purchase order was in the amount of $24,000, which is below the threshold for council authority. We have exceeded that authority with pending invoices due to unanticipated knockdowns of streetlights, outages, things of that sort that need to be repaired. So we are requesting authority to go up to $49,000 to cover invoices that are pending and anticipated invoices through the end of the year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept an OVI Task Force Grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. The estimated cost is $18,000. The amount budgeted is zero. This is requested by the Police Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason, I believe, where are you?
Yeah, yes, Your Honor. The city of Kettering has approved for an $18,000 Montgomery County OVI Task Force Grant. Comes from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. The grant reimburses the city for overtime expenses related to the 2024 and 2025 OVI enforcement. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into and implement a collective bargaining agreement with the Kettering Association of Dispatchers, which is consistent with a tentative agreement reached by the bargaining teams. This is being requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Move for approval. Second. I'm so sorry.
Quite all right. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. I think the introductory language was self-explanatory. We're pleased to report that we reached a tentative bargaining agreement with the Kettering Association of Dispatchers, and appreciate their collaborative effort. That tentative agreement in general has 3% pay increases in each of the bargaining years and some other language related to uniforms and holiday. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for asbestos abatement within Building 64. The estimated, 46, I apologize, the estimated cost is $225,000. The amount budgeted is zero. This is requested by the Public Service Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, we are working to improve Building 46. We received $1.25 million in state capital bill funding for facility improvements at that building in the Kettering Business Park. A critical first step in improving that building is removing asbestos, abating is the word, abating the asbestos in that building, and it is estimated to cost $225,000, and this will authorize us to move forward with it. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use sealed bidding, competitive bargaining, negotiated quotes, and/or an approved cooperative purchasing program for the purchase and installation of automated external defibrillators within park facilities. The estimated cost of this request is $35,000. Same amount of funds available. This was requested by the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. House Bill 47, approved by the Ohio Legislature, requires the cities to place an AED, Automated External Defibrillator, in each sports and recreation location under the city's control where sports and recreation activities occur. The following locations have been proposed by staff: Indian River Park, Kennedy Park, Ireland Park, Ernst Park, State Farm Park, Delco Park, the Kettering Middle School Football Concessions Building, and two restroom buildings, tennis court, or tennis court fencing, and a couple other concession buildings. So, quite a few, and this would authorize us to do that.
Thank you. Do any, anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31 of 2024. The estimated cost is $262,000 with zero being budgeted, and it is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. You have approved all of these items. This ordinance appropriates the funds necessary to move forward with the projects that you just approved earlier in the meeting. $19,000 for the streetlight maintenance, $18,000 for the OVI Task Force Grant, and $225,000 for asbestos abatement at Building 46. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to the end of resolutions. We have one ordinance in first reading.
All right, I'll take that. So, I have an ordinance in first reading to amend ordinance numbers 3862-01, 3908-02, 3909-02, 3910-02, and 3949-03 regarding the tax increment financing district for Governor's Place.
You must be a math teacher. They moved, no vote, required first reading. Okay, do we have any certifications or petitions this evening, Mrs. Haslip?
Ordinance in first reading.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Mr. Greason, would you like to say anything about that ordinance that we just read in first reading?
I'd be glad to have Mr. Chikowski do it.
Okay. Mr. Chikowski.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, ordinance 3862-01 adopted February 3, 2001. Ordinance is 3908-02, 3909-02, and 3910-02 adopted together on April 23, 2002, as well as ordinance 3949-03 adopted August 12, 2003. Collectively created the Hills and Dale Tax Increment Finance District, commonly known as the TIF. This particular TIF is commonly known as Governor's Place. Since its inception, the district has collected sufficient revenues to fund the initial construction of the defined public improvements, Governor's Place Boulevard and associated utility infrastructure. Additional district funds will be expended in 2025 to repave Governor's Place Boulevard and update other improvements within the public rideaway. Following the 2025 expenditure, a small six-figure balance is anticipated to remain in the TIF fund. This legislation will amend the definition of what constitutes a public infrastructure improvement on which TIF district revenues can be spent, with the Hills and Dale TIF district bordered by West Dorothy Lane, which is scheduled for resurfacing at a future date in light of tonight's legislative activity, and Dixie Drive also scheduled for resurfacing at a later date in coordination with tonight's legislation. Any remaining TIF district funds can be spent on these or other qualifying public improvement projects which will directly benefit the Hills and Dale TIF district.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions about that ordinance? We will be having the second reading on that at the next meeting. Now, Mrs. Haslip, do we have any certifications and petitions?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call on the city manager, Matt Greason, at this point to give a community update and the manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to highlight Hispanic Heritage Month and the art contest celebration that I know that you and Councilmember Sudditt had the opportunity to attend. Ninety entries were received, nine winners were received an award, and I wanted to highlight that, for the public, that that art display will be up through the end of the week, and we encourage people to take a look at the outstanding Hispanic Heritage Month art contest winners. Medicare open enrollment began October 15 and will go through December 7. If you need more information regarding Medicare resources, residents can contact our senior services coordinator, Natalie Storms, at the number on the screen. Natalie is an outstanding resource for our seniors. Leaf collection has begun, but if you've noticed, not all the leaves have fallen yet.
They will.
Yes, they will. It's inevitable. It will continue out throughout the districts in numerical order, and depending on the size of the district and the amount of leaves to be collected, crews could pass through more than one district per day. We want residents to rake their leaves to the edge of the lawn, but not into the street. We don't want traffic blocked, and we don't want problems with our storm drains. We'd ask that there be no branches, sticks, grass, or other yard waste among the leaves as they clog the machinery, and that will slow us down. If you have questions, certainly feel free to call our service department. Our DEA drug takeback is happening Saturday, October 26, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kettering Police Department, so those unused, unwanted drugs, please bring them in, get them out of your cabinets. We're excited that this weekend, October 26, is Make a Difference Day, and there are volunteer efforts for everyone. Community yard assistance, there'll be blankets for a Project Linus effort, people making blankets, sending, making holiday greeting cards, and continuing our work on the rain garden at Van Buren Park. There are lots of ways to make a difference this Saturday. If you want to sign up, you can do it online at the, with the information on the screen, or call the City of Kettering Volunteer Office. I know many people's favorite holiday of the year, Beggars Night, Thursday, October 31st, is 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I also wanted to highlight our council schedule. City council meetings for the month of December are going to be December 3, when we will have our budget workshop at 5:00 p.m., and the regular city council meeting at 7:30. December 10, where our workshop will be at 6:00 p.m., and the city council meeting will be at 7:30 p.m. We do have a joint school board meeting, and that will be held at the fire headquarters next week, Tuesday, October 29. That's at 6:00 p.m. Just a reminder to turn back your clocks. Daylight Savings ends at 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, November 3. And lastly, Veterans Day, our Veterans Day ceremony will be November 11 at 11:00 a.m. Veterans Plaza at Delco Park. Certainly a special event that we encourage everyone to attend each year. Your Honor, that's all I have, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? At this point, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone here who would like to speak before city council? This is on any topic and not on legislation as previously asked. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will then move on to council reports. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to start?
I have nothing special to report from the last couple weeks, but I will invite residents to come visit me at Wilds Creek because that's where I'll be working the Make a Difference Day. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. I attended Family Fun Fest at Trent Arena yesterday with my family, and I always like shining a light on whenever the city and the school district are working well together, which is often. But there was also a lot of other organizations present. There was Doorwood Optimists, Kettering Rec Center was there, their staff, the YMCA, Kettering Backpack Program, a lot of businesses donated to our, the raffle that the kids got to participate in. So, it was just a lot of good organizations that are there for Kettering families, so it's good when they all come together. But that's it for me.
Thanks. Jill?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all are moving so fast tonight. So, the only thing I want to report on is last week, the Kettering Leadership Academy had Government Day. It was our first official meeting of the year, and I want to thank all the directors and members of city staff who participated. It was a great day. There was so much good discussion, a lot of good questions, and I want to especially thank Matt Greason and Steve Bergstresser. Steve especially spent the whole day, basically, with KLA, and I know how busy you guys are, and that's a huge thing for them. So, thank you so much. That's it.
Just a few things. First of all, just to highlight the work that the Board of Community Relations is doing. It's been a busy few months for them, but, you know, they were sort of the force behind the Hispanic Heritage Month art contest. But the neat thing about that contest was the work that the art teachers in the schools did to not only take this opportunity for students to create art in recognition of that month, Hispanic heritage, but the students, as you talked to them and saw the work, had studied famous Hispanic and Latino artists that inspired the works that they created and have on display, and it's really special to see that sort of history component added to this art piece that these kids created. Really neat to see that work. And also, it's the BCR and those volunteers that poured through those 21 applications that brought the seven best of the best neighbors that we recognize tonight, and that's a program only in its second year that come from BCR, and that whole team is just so excited about growing that program and just finding more and more neighbors to highlight in our community. Also, as a former neighbor and colleague in school with Bill Scherhart, welcome to the team, sir. It's great to have you. And that's all I have. I'll see you guys Saturday on Make a Difference Day somewhere, so I will make a last-minute decision based on the weather because I'm a limp, so I'll just say it out publicly. I'll be indoors if it's bad and outdoors if it's good. No lie.
Yeah, the blanket project indoors sounds better all the time, but thanks, Brian. I don't have a whole lot to add. I would like to just comment on the Hispanic art project. It's a new project here in the community. I thought this was the first year you said.
This is the first year, and it's second for neighbors.
Okay, that's, okay. It was, it was really a neat thing to see, just seeing kids going above and beyond something that they needed to do for school, and killed two birds with one stone. Helped the Arts Council and at the same time helped Board of Community Relations carry off a great project, so congratulations for that one. The only other thing I'd like to add, like to remind everybody, get your kids to school. Thirty percent of the kids in the state of Ohio are chronically absent in school, meaning that they miss at least one-tenth of the school year, equal of a whole month of school year. We have got to turn this around, and I'm going to make a point of reminding people every week, don't think for a minute that, oh, it's okay if they sleep in this day. There's always tomorrow. Well, there isn't. So, get your kids, get your grandkids, get your neighbor kids off to school. With that, I think we have no further business this evening. The next council meeting will be on November 12. Seems hard to believe, November, and this meeting is adjourned.